I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting for Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I want to remind everybody, recording vice will be used during the meeting, so you have to use the microphones. Yeah, I'll remember this time. Public comments for agenda items, rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution two thousand and oh-one dash oh-eight. The time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting, and we will be sticking to the three minutes. Is there any public comment on agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, pardon the interruption. Do we want to do the pledge?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's... Excuse me. Take a step back and go do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now we'll step forward and go to public comment. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, minutes of previous meeting. Is our motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the August third morning work session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The treasurer's report and authorization to pay bills and approval of payroll. I've reviewed them, and I'll make the motion to accept the treasurer's report and the authorization to pay bills and approval of payroll. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to item five, township manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a short report this evening. I'd like to start with an update on the two thousand and twenty-four budget process. The East Brandywine Township Budget Committee has begun the huge task of preparing a budget for this board's consideration. Preparations for two thousand and twenty-four began a whole month early this year. I'd like to recognize the Budget Committee for their initiative in accomplishing that. Throughout the budget process, the Budget Committee will meet more frequently than their standard monthly meeting. Included in your packet and written in my report are ten milestones. I will not read them aloud here, but there are ten dates of importance in the budget process. There are two upcoming events before we meet again for a night meeting. The first is the last of the three Free Family Movies in the Park, featuring the film The Mitchells vs. The Machines will be in the Community Park on August eighteenth, that's tomorrow, at sunset or eight-thirty PM. The first of three Fall Speaker Series, featuring Peter Miller, Forgotten Woman of American Modernism, will be in this room on September seventeenth at three PM. Respectfully submitted, Township Manager.
Thank you. Supervisors, have any questions? All right, building inspector's report.
Shall I read that into the record?
Yes, please.
For the month of July, two thousand and twenty-three, there were thirty-one building permits issued, seven zoning permits issued. Total fees collected for building and zoning permits totaled thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. There were seventeen use and occupancy permit issues, one hundred and forty-seven inspections completed, with zero failed inspections. That brings the total fees collected to the same thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Respectfully submitted, Norine King, Permits Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Revan. Is there a roadmaster's report tonight?
There is not.
Police Department report.
Good evening. I want to take a moment to congratulate Deputy Chief Jeffy Encarnich on his acceptance into the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Command and Leadership Academy. This past week, the deputy chief and I attended his orientation session at the Chester County Government Services Building. The Police Command and Leadership Academy is designed after the U.S. Military Academy of West Point's model of command and leadership. It is an intensive and demanding thirteen-week course in which the deputy chief will attend classroom instruction every Tuesday with additional outside-the-classroom work and research projects. Level and instruction and the workload is on par with other law enforcement management schools such as Northwest Institute and the FBI National Academy. Classes begin next Tuesday, August twenty-second, with the final exams and graduation to be determined sometime at the end of November. So congratulations to the deputy chief, and we wish him all luck in the academy. For the month of July, the Police Department recorded two thousand, three hundred and fourteen events. We completed two hundred and fifty investigations. We had four criminal arrests, eight summary arrests, one warrant arrest, one juvenile petition was completed, they investigated eleven traffic accidents, officers issued one hundred and eighty-three traffic citations, issued fifty-one traffic warnings, and the officers logged nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three miles of patrol. Training completed for the month, myself and the deputy chief attended the two thousand and twenty-three PA Chiefs Conference, and Corporal Juan Lemus attended Interview and Interrogation School. There was no correspondence this month, and attachments that you have are the monthly investigations, officer attended the report, and there's no correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And the fire company report.
Thank you. Joe Edwards for the East Brandywine Fire Company. For the month of July, we had ninety total incidents, forty-five fire, forty-five medical. We had nineteen fire calls in East Brandywine Township. We had twenty-five medical calls in East Brandywine Township. We had average personnel responding of eleven, eighteen per major incidents. We used a hundred and thirty-four gallons of East Brandywine fuel. We had a seven-hundred-dollar East Brandywine Township fire loss that was a riding tractor that was fully involved and unfortunately burned up. We had four training sessions with an average of twenty-one personnel, logging a hundred and seventy training hours. Was able to share with the supervisors and the township manager the picture of training last night where we had thirty-three personnel attendance, which is still continuing to grow as we voted in three new people last meeting night. Our rescue truck is back and back in service, and we're looking forward to the fall when hopefully the new rescue truck will be coming in.
I want to congratulate you on having thirty-three volunteers come on a summer evening for training.
Thank you.
That shows the commitment of your team, as well as the outstanding leadership in the fire company. So I, as a resident and a supervisor, appreciate it tremendously.
Thank you.
June and July planning commission minutes. Do I want to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business. I'm not aware of any old business, so we'll move on to new business. Seven A, appointment of Gabriella Brown as Municipal Authority Administrator. Gabriella here tonight?
Uh...
Not Lou. Would you like to make some comments?
Well, sure. I'm just pleased to announce that the township has completed two successful searches for vacancies, either due to turnover in positions or planned retirements. The next two agenda items are the fruits of that successful search, and I'm very pleased to welcome both to the team. I will point out that the first one we're considering here, Ms. Brown, is a municipal authority manager, which means that her compensation is through an agreement with the municipal authority paid by the rate payers of the sewer system and not the township's general fund. She will be the first person hired for this position that is full-time. The position was previously part-time. So with that, and with the first entry, it's my pleasure to recommend that the board appoint Gabrielle Brown as Municipal Authority Administrator.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gabrielle Brown as Municipal Authority Administrator. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And you might as well move into Alexis Bocelli.
Right, so the township had some turnover at the treasurer position, and we were able to promote from within to fill that position, which created a vacancy elsewhere. So after an extensive search, the search committee and staff is pleased to recommend that we appoint Alexis Bocelli as the township's receptionist.
I'll make a motion to appoint Alexis Bocelli as receptionist.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And seven C is Bonsville Mill Arboretum. Ms. Moser.
I'm here to ask for your support for the Bonsville Mill Arboretum, Level One. I'd like to introduce our committee, Maria Nicholas, Eric Nickolas, Billy Blankfeld, Joe Boccella, and you know David Cole. Maria is going to kick this off, and Lou has already put Maria's slide up there.
Hi, I'm Maria Nicholas. I've been a resident in the township for twenty-nine years, almost thirty now.
Can you move the mic closer?
Yep. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so I present, I'm going to do a presentation on why we would like to be considered and how easy it would be to become an arboretum. So what I first did was I looked at the master site plan report for the park, and I found this lovely quote, "The park should be developed as a passive recreational park showcasing the historic aspect of the mill and the natural areas of this stretch of the Beaver Creek." And that's exactly what we plan to highlight. So the first question most people have is what is an arboretum? Basically, an arboretum is a botanical garden specializing in either woody shrubs and trees, either or, both. It's a living outdoor museum that celebrates and preserves nature. It's a living garden intended to inspire curiosity and enhance knowledge, and it's a celebration of nature's diversity for all to enjoy. As far as East Brandywine Township goes, getting the arboretum designation would be beneficial. It would expand Bonsville Mill's park's focus to include both industrial and natural history. It would emphasize the unique native flora of the Bonsville Mill Park site. It increases grant and funding opportunities. It increases the public's awareness of East Brandywine Township's dedication to conservation and biological diversity, and it provides residents with opportunities for relaxation and enjoyment of nature. And opportunities that the park and arboretum would provide to the public, local field trip opportunities for schools and home schools, project opportunities for local schools, scouts, and other groups, educational opportunities, research and outreach opportunities for schools and universities, and Arbor Day programming. So how do we become an arboretum? And it is easier than you would think. To achieve the Level One arboretum status, there are five things that an organization has to do. First, we need to have a plan. It's got to define the purpose of the arboretum, the audience, the type of plants, maintenance, and a succession plan. There also needs to be an organizational group, pretty much like a steering committee. These are individuals dedicated to the arboretum plan and its continuation. We need a collection of trees and shrubs. We need a minimum of twenty-five species. They need to be labeled taxonomically and with acquisition information if the plants were purchased. We need volunteers. That should not be a problem. I'm one of the garden volunteers, and there are very many of us, but you do need a volunteer base. And then you need a public dimension. The arboretum must provide some level of public access, and they must provide at least one public event or educational program each year focused on the trees or the arboretum purposes. The initial costs, this is the fun part, there's absolutely zero cost to apply or to maintain membership in the arboretum. We go through ArbNet, which is, it's an international group that recognizes arboretums. There are four levels. The only one we will ever qualify for is Level One. Level One, you don't have to have paid staff. Once you get to Level Two, you need paid staff. Give you an example, Longwood is the highest, which is Level Four. We're not going there. So ArbNet application fee, zero. Annual dues, zero. The tree labels, which we would need to qualify, we've estimated about three hundred and seventy-five dollars, but Billy is doing an Eagle Scout project, and he is going to raise the money for those. And the labor is volunteer, so that makes it easy. In the future, if we wanted to put more labels on more trees, they're probably about fifteen dollars each, depending where you buy them, so it's not an overwhelming cost. And here are listed some of the tree species and shrub species that we have located so far on the property. These are native plants, native shrubs, which is pretty much what the gardens are focused on there, so figures that we would focus on that as far as the arboretum. As far as the timeline, this summer, we have formed an organizational group, and we are meeting, and you know, with your blessing, we would begin to draft a master plan. In the fall, we would complete the master plan and identify the collection members. Over the winter, organize the volunteers, get the collection labels ordered, and Billy will be able to talk a little bit about, more about that. And in the spring, we hope to attach the labels to the trees, submit our application for the arboretum status, and then begin focused educational programs and public outreach. So we can do this. We can make the Bonsville Mill Park and Arboretum a reality. And Billy, would you like to?
Hello, I'm Billy Blankmeyer. I'm from Troop Twenty-Three. We're based out of Downingtown, VA, so right around here. So how I would help out, I'm helping with fundraising, the research, we're looking to put a little bit more than just what the trees are on the tree plaques. We're hoping to put a little bit more about what they do for the naturals, like wildlife around here, what they're doing, what they're helpful about, you know? Like milkweeds to monarch butterflies. I'd also help with the implementing. I'd get volunteers from my troop interested, which is a big part, you know, getting people in, you know, younger people, like interested, younger people, younger scouts, people that will want to come to the park and, you know, just bring more interest, which is some of the point of the arboretum. So helping with that, again, we're doing the plaques and all that. You know, draw people in. I'm really excited to help, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Cole. I guess one thing is a common denominator here tonight is that we hear about community. And I'd like to give you my personal thank you for showing your support to East Brandywine by your leadership and vision in underwriting this program we have at Historic Bonsville Mill and Gardens. We can enrich people's lives by educating them about and reconnecting them to the natural world. I'd like to thank not only the Board of Supervisors, but to the Chester County, the state, especially DCNR, our future Eagle Scout, and the volunteers, and especially Sandy Moser, who has been the backbone of this project. DCNR said to me when they were interviewing me for the grant, gee, we like this project. We're used to doing baseball fields, tennis courts, but we think that this is a template for the future. You're speaking of ecology, you're speaking of sustainability, you're speaking about reconnecting citizens to the outside world. This can be a template for future grants and programs that we can do. I've already started putting this squarely in the Philadelphia Horticultural Community Ballpark frame by the committee. Members of all the arboretums are on the Horticultural Committee from the get-go, and that's going to be expanded as we go to arboretum status. They will be our friends and our mentors throughout this progress. The first thing we're going to do, I think, is all the people here tonight involved in the arboretum are going to join individual entry-level membership, which is ten dollars apiece. We're going to do this ourselves. After that, we're going to apply for American Public Gardens membership, which is a big deal. America's garden capital. Well, you may not know that Philadelphia area, the eleven counties around here, have more gardens than anywhere else in the United States and perhaps the world. There are thirty-eight public gardens within the thirty-eight mile, within the thirty-mile radius of Philadelphia. This is our community, East Brandywine, Chester County, Southeastern Pennsylvania, and that's my vision for Brandywine Arboretum, to be a national draw. Then we will go into afterward, a member of American Public Gardens, we will join automatically American Gardens capital. They have their own website. We will have international and national exposure through this. We will be listed on their website to search the gardens. And that nice East Brandywine is going to be literally on the map nationally. We have seasonal happenings according to garden, dog parks, events and activities, highlight the different gardens, seasonal news, but this will be the kind of playground that we're going to be playing in, is on a national scale. I'm very proud that East Brandywine is doing that, not only as a citizen, but also as a horticulturist. I'd like to thank you again for not only your commitment, but your vision. America's garden capital means two hundred and fifty million dollars to income to the gardens. That's not counting what it does to property values, which when listed is an asset because you have an arboretum in the township, so automatically it would raise property values, and there's a spillover effect into businesses, restaurants, hotels, other businesses in the area. We have day trippers, people who will plan their trip. There's also the garden passport series. I don't know if we've passed that already, where they go to each garden and get a stamp from each garden that they visit. It's a big deal, and I'm happy to be proud of it because I believe in it. I believe that the time is right to show our commitment to the natural world, especially with the environment being like it is. And East Brandywine is leading, like DCNR said, is a template for other... Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
As I said, we would love to have your support. It'll look really good on our application. It is sort of like your trees, and we're trying to give them some identity. There is no cost to doing this at the park, as you saw, and so what do you say?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking of us.
Just the permission to go ahead and start arboretum.
Permission to send in the application.
I don't have any problems.
No, I don't have any either.
I'm fine with it.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your volunteers and help. That was easy.
Okay. Next item is the Township Community Gardens. Ms. Arjaniyan?
Usha Arjunan.
I'm sorry.
It's Usha Arjunan.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Usha Arjunan, and I'm here with my friend and neighbor, Jayanti. We live in Apple Cross Country Club, and my request today is that we want to create a community garden. First and foremost, I've been living in Apple Cross Country Club for the past eight years, and when we bought a house in this community, as a first-time buyer and very new to US, we didn't know the norms and regulations. My dream was to have a garden wherein I could grow my vegetables and small, small fruits and, you know, flowers. But it was pretty disappointing when we moved into the community, and we got to know that, you know, we're not allowed to grow anything on the lawn, and we're just supposed to be using it like, you know, we can grow in the planters. And I did make several calls to the local churches and schools, asking if there was any opportunity for me and like-minded people in my community to create a community garden, because this is something that's happening in areas like Westchester, Malvin, and Exton and all, and I don't see something similar happening in our area. And I feel that, you know, this would be a very good initiative to bring the community together, to keep the kids involved during spring, and also to understand that, you know, it takes a lot of physical labor and patience to grow something. For the kids, it would be a very good value lesson that, you know, you can keep as much needed for your need and whatever is grown extra that you can share with the community, and that is a big lesson for them, because during summer for us, it is like something like a family activity that we do every summer is go to Lynnville Orchards or one of those orchards just to pick our own vegetables. So I'm looking at an opportunity where we can create a community garden. I'm not, I did not come prepared as much as they did with all the presentations or thinking about the cost, but what I understand is that at least as of now, close to ten to fifteen families are very much interested. If given an opportunity, and we need access to water and a plot, like it could be divided by ten by ten or twenty by twenty, whatever with the nominal fee, we will take the responsibility of cleaning it up and handing it over in the same condition that it's been handed over to us, and part of the produce will be shared with lots pantry or whichever organization is in need of, and just bringing it to their attention that, you know, if something like this could be considered.
I think, Usha, the first thing that, have you guys run to or talked with the Parks and Rec yet?
I'd go to that, go to that meeting first, get your idea, then you can support, and they'll come. Because it is recreation, obviously gardening, and as the Bonsville Mill, it all starts with the Parks and Rec, and it's off of that. But my thinking is, I heard you say, the only negative thing that I can tell you that I heard of, that you had said was water. And aside from having a well drilled on property, that's the only thing I can think of would be a problem, me personally. But I think it's a fantastic idea.
No, you're going to need a deer-proof fence, which is thousands of dollars.
You know, in fact, I was thinking of approaching all the farms around in the area because they have so much of land and they have access to water as well, but then I didn't know if it was okay to just go and knock on their door and ask, you know, if this opportunity is available. So any guidance also in this regard as to who would be the person that I need to talk to, because I've been reaching out to different people, and somebody told me that, you know, reaching out to the township office would be the next step.
First person that comes to mind is Sandy or David.
Right. Have you looked into the two co-op, are they called co-op gardens?
CSAs.
Yeah, CSAs is more or less like we pay to them, and then they do the produce, and then they share it with us, in the sense we buy it from them. It's not like us growing our own produce. For us, this is something that I want to do for the kids and the community together that, you know, growing our own stuff. There's a lot of thrill and, you know, satisfaction in it, because I have few very small planters, but the amount of money that I spend on the plant and in comparison to the yield that I get, I get hardly like two or four tomatoes in a season, but even those two to four tomatoes are like, you know, very, very important for me, and I feel that if we can grow it in a larger scale, even ten by ten plot, I know that it can create a pretty good yield.
Well, I know it may not fit your model perfectly, but I know two people that are part of Two Gander Farm, and they do, they weed, they take care of the vegetables, and they're paid for their work with an allocation of vegetables. But they have a lot of land up there. It's already eased, eased under open space, and maybe you can look into making a agreement with them.
A caution spot.
Yeah, that would be a separate type of garden, if you're willing to administer it. But people don't understand, and I have... What people don't understand, and I have, I've been involved in community gardens, gardens is, you do, it's almost like a homeowners' association, but worse. The person next to your 20 feet might be spraying with something to kill aphids and you don't want that blowing over to your 20 feet. Those arguments can become violent.
That's something that I've never encountered so far. Thank you.
You do need a water source. You do need a deer fence. To get a deer fence, you need a zoning variance. And you're going to have to have more land than you may think, and then people are going to sign up for their 20-foot plots, and the second year they get bored and now you've got a 20-foot weed plot. Have you actually approached the homeowners' association in Apple Cross?
No, I haven't.
Well, I would, I recognize and realize why they don't want each individual home to have a garden. But maybe if you have enough activity over there or people over there that are interested in it, they'll, they'll put aside some of their open space for your garden, and it's going to be much easier to get water and things like that in an already developed development.
That sounds good.
So.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, as of the first step, I can even talk to them and see if they are willing to share that, you know, that space with us.
Right.
That should be good.
But, see, the problem is it's a great idea, but it's going to take a lot of money and a lot of organization. We don't have the staff to monitor it. We're not going to have, our public works department can't go up there and mow the common paths and things like that. It's, it's, it wouldn't be in the best interest of all the residents in the township. But a two-pronged attack, three-pronged attack, go to the Park and Rec Board, go to the homeowners' association.
And Park and Rec, their meetings are on our website as well, and they'll have their meetings every.
Okay, I'll look into it.
And then just email us.
And I would contact Tugander Farm and see, and see if anything can be done. They may, they may turn you down, but they may also want the revenue because you're going to rent the land, and renting is probably cheaper than buying. Land in this township is expensive. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That sounds good.
And I'd just point out that we have two CSAs. We've been, just in fairness to, to all the opportunities in East Brandywine, there's Forge Hill and Tugander Farms.
Yeah, actually Lisa did share the two CSA information to me when I was interacting with her. So I was just thinking that, you know, I just wanted to bring this to the attention of everybody if there was an opportunity besides the CSA.
And I, it's, the board would humor me. I have one additional question as well.
Yes.
Of the, the group that you have that are interested, are any of them outside of the Apple Cross HOA?
Oh, definitely outside as well.
So what other HOAs have restrictions on gardening plots?
I know for one, in our community, almost 15 people, 15 families are interested. And opposite, we have Ryan's Maple View, and also they have a restriction. And I can find out from other community people because there is hideaway farms and other farms, hideaway community and other communities around. That shouldn't be a difficulty, difficult step for me.
I would be interested to know how many people in the community are in residential developments that prohibit their own small plots? Thank you.
I'll do my homework and goodbye. Thank you.
Our email is supervisors@eastbrandywine.org, so all three of us will get it.
Thank you.
With the information that you receive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Subdivision and zoning applications. I don't believe there are any. And item nine, ordinances and resolutions for consideration. Mr. Revan, are you going to present the ordinances?
I will do so in the absence of our solicitor this evening. I don't know that I will be able to do as good a job.
Updating our ordinances.
I know.
But we have a little, since it is an ordinance, we do have a little bit of housekeeping. So before you is Draft Ordinance Four of 2023. It is a model Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors ordinance that's been modified for the township's use. It establishes the service charges for return fees, the mailing of duplicates, and for tax certifications that may be charged by the tax collector. The solicitor arranged to have it advertised in the Daily Local on August 9th, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the draft ordinance, but at this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to adopt ordinance four of 2023.
I move we adopt ordinance four of 2023.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And would you mind doing the resolution?
Sure. So located throughout our code are references in various permit processes to fee schedules that may be set by the Board of Supervisors from time to time. Over the many years that we've adopted ordinances that have permit processes, we've had a corresponding number of resolutions that it becomes very difficult to find the appropriate resolution with the fee schedule listed. Over the course of the last few years, I've endeavored to consolidate into a single routinely considered and adopted fee schedule all the different fees that may be collected by the township. Before you this evening is Draft Resolution. This would be numbered seven of 23. It is in your packet in two forms, a redlined and a copy that is ready to be executed. I included the redline so that you may review to see exactly what has changed from previous iterations. I would say in this instance, the intent is to consolidate and to reference, I will give you an example. We recently adopted an ordinance for block parties and never established a fee at all. So the intent here is to consolidate and create, not to increase fees, but you can read the full text and come to a different conclusion if you're.
Right in reviewing it, I didn't really see any fees changing. I just saw definitions.
Yeah, I would, I would characterize it as not an increase in fees, but I, I think it's important, or it's at least an administrative goal of mine, to have a consolidated fee schedule.
Correct.
So at this time, I would respectfully ask the board to adopt Resolution Seven of 2023.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Seven of 2023.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who wishes to make comments on non-agenda items?
I just have one comment here. Of course, we're talking about Lindell and the park there. And, and I was looking at your, your resolution here, Chapter 399 zoning, and when you go through the zoning, you find that what is permitted in floodplain area are parks. And it's right in your own code here, Township of East Brandywine, PA, Thursday, August 10th, 2023. Why don't you keep that in mind when you're thinking about Lindell and the park that we have requested, that you purchased, that is in your zoning ordinance to allow to have a park there. Now, it does make the exception that there should be no buildings in there. Well, that was part of the plan, to remove the greenhouses because they are in the floodplain and they are helping to cause a problem. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, under notices, oh, excuse me, is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to notices. There were no executive sessions that have been held between Friday, August 4th, and the PM session on August 17th tonight. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you for your presentations. Thank you for taking the time. We're done.
Thank you.